Okay, roll call. Please start voting. Ms. Holling?
All councilors present and Counselor V. Hill requested to be excused.
Okay, thank you so very much. Counselor, I have to let you know that Counselor V. Hill, he did try to call in, but some things came up to where he wasn't able to actually call in tonight, but he did send me a text a few minutes ago to let me know that he did try. He wanted to come call in, but he couldn't. Okay, up next we have the agenda approval. Yes, Counselor Gregel?
If there's no other additions, I'll make the motion approved. The agenda is presented and excused, Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not please start voting. Ms. Holling?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next we have citizen comments. This is the segment on the agenda where we allow the citizens to come up and make a comment. We ask that you keep your comments below three minutes. If you're still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. Right now it looks like we only have one person, Marlena Martinez? Okay, and if I didn't say your name right, please let me know, but please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, yes, Marlena Martinez. I do know some of you, so hi, nice to see you. I work in a new role with the University of Colorado and the Department of Family Medicine. We're working on a project right now called It Matters. It's been going since May of 2017. Some of you may have been involved. It Matters stands for Implementing Technology and Medically-Assisted Treatment and Team Trainings in Rural Colorado. I am our research liaison here in the San Luis Valley, and I'm here tonight to discuss with you a community knowledge survey that we are conducting in the public sector for those of us who are engaged with community members to ask for your feedback through this survey. There's no need to do anything at this point, but if I'm able to, I'd like to leave these here with you. This first page talks more about the project that we're working on, and then the survey is behind. It's 25 questions, takes you about three minutes, and then I also have prepaid postage envelope here. You can just drop it right in the post office right over there when you're finished, but your feedback really helps us to fill the gaps in the project that we are doing right now and to further our work here in the valley and see what we can still do to help with the opioid use disorder and increase knowledge about medically assisted treatment and other options that are available. So if I have your approval, I'd like to just leave them here and let you guys do these at your own convenience, if that's okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When it started a couple of years ago, did we do these surveys then? Are they the same surveys?
Yes, this was a pre... It's not the same survey, as far as I know. I think some of the questions have changed. Some of them are the same, but this is kind of our post to kind of see, have we made improvements? Where are the gaps still? And yeah, to follow through with that.
Will we be able, as community members, to get the results?
Yes, so if you'd like to get the results, you'd want to contact Linda Zittelman, which her information is on this first page here, and it'll probably be a while, as you know, data takes time, but I will also be the contact here locally, and I left my information on that paper too, so you're welcome to reach out to me as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, it looks like we don't have any other questions. Thank you so very much, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Okay, up next we have under ceremonial items, First Southwest Bank Donation Presentation. You all can come up to the podium. She would appreciate that.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
I'm Jenny Jack Goodwin. This is Delzia Worley. We're with First Southwest Bank, and we, as most of you know, are a CDFI bank, which is a community development financial institution, which allows us to have access to funding sources that traditional banks don't necessarily have. And because of some of our activities that we do in low-income areas, we have received funding from the U.S. Treasury. That's basically just money given to us, so it's really nice. So what that has done for us is it's allowed us to give back to our communities. So tonight, we would like to present a check for $2,000 for the specific purpose of the ice skating rink. And Delzia, you want to talk about what...
So we're super excited to be a part of this, and I think it's just a great way to give back to the community. One of our core values are make a difference, and I think that Jenny and I personally really work hard to make a difference in the community, but that's truly one of our bank core values. And so with this donation, we were also able to sponsor a night at the ice skate rink. Andy gave us feedback. I think we had 65 participants and then about that many people watching, and so that's just a great vision. I know you guys want to keep that cost affordable, and that was a cool way to give back to our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Hensley?
Well, without a doubt, you both truly do make a difference. I know I'm on many committees with both of you, and so I appreciate what you do for our community. I appreciate that that also runs through the bank as well and what the bank does, and I am a true supporter of the ice skating rink and what it's doing, and I've been an opponent for it from the beginning, and so thank you, because this does really help to keep it going, keep those prices down. And obviously, there's probably children that did that, the ice skating on that day, that had never done it before. So every time having a couple more new people come and be aware of it and know that it's another resource is just fantastic, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate that, because I understand, my understanding of the CFDI?
CDFI.
CDFI designation, sorry, is not something that is necessarily something all banks go after either, and so I really appreciate that you're willing to bring that money to us and to this community and share that in a way and live the vision of your bank and live the vision of your team. I work with many of your team members on different committees and things like that, and they always have wonderful things to say about the place that they work, and we can see as the city, all of the contributions your team members make as individuals, but also as your organization makes to us, and so thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Brawls?
I'll be a little bit more brief and speak out and say thank you for Southwest Bank. I appreciate your contribution.
Okay. I too would like to thank you for sharing the wealth and also investing in our community and investing in the kids by making that contribution to the multipurpose center. Thank you for the free skate night that you had as well, and the people participated, just like Counselor Hensley said. Some of them probably did it for the first time, but your community support is greatly appreciated, and I wish you much success.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we going to do anything with the check down there? Okay, up next, we have Consent Calendar A. Has anyone, everyone had an opportunity to review it? Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holling?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next on the regular business, we have a presentation from outside agencies.
Mayor, I just, so I apologize. Mr. Moyer is here, and he was just approved on Consent Calendar A. Can we just tell him congratulations?
Sure, thank you so very much, Counselor Daniel, for bringing that to our attention. I'll go ahead and let you say it.
Well, Mr. Moyer, Consent Calendar A got you approved to the Historic Preservation Committee, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for being a willing participant from our community.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to you serving. Thank you so very much. Okay, so now we're on the regular business, a presentation from outside agencies, Adam State University update. Heather, did you want to have any comments before they come up?
I don't. Mr. Simpson had contacted me and wanted to present an update to City Council related to Adam State University, so we'll just turn it over to him.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, thank you for the opportunity to come this evening. Really what I was trying to do was engage with a number of constituents and stakeholders across the campus and the community about kind of next steps in the progress towards leadership at Adam State University. So the university hired Dr. Cheryl Lovell July of last year under an interim one-year contract basis, so at some point there are some decisions that have to be made about next steps. So at the board meeting, the Board of Trustees meeting in December, the board outlined what I've characterized as a preferred process, but not a predetermined outcome, of next steps in the presidency at Adam State. So the preferred process was, at the February meeting, which we meet in Denver next week, the preferred process would be the Board of Trustees take action to remove the interim moniker for Dr. Lovell and make her the permanent president at Adam State University, and then initiate, usually what happens was the board would authorize somebody on the board to function in a negotiating capacity and work toward a contractual longer-term agreement with Dr. Lovell. But again, it was identified as our preferred process, but not predetermined. I've been to Faculty Senate, I've been to ASNF, I've been to Grisley Board, there's a laundry list of constituents on and off campus. I've always, the reason I'm here tonight, because there's not a bigger stakeholder off-campus than the city of Alamosa. So wanted to engage with the council and let them know the direction we were going. The board is excited to have Dr. Lovell in her capacity. She brings a really solid leadership foundation to the university. It's been just a short timeframe though, so it's only been six, we're getting on seven months now, to really demonstrate what her capabilities are. The board was comfortable in moving forward with, again, making her a permanent president of Adam State and working on what the sideboards would be under, you know, a longer-term contract would, still yet to be determined by the Board of Trustees. But again, the hope was through engagement with the community on-campus and off-campus, we would encourage and offer, look, there's always an offer from the trustees to City Council, engage with the trustees individually, anecdotally, or more formally, anytime, but wanted to make sure the invitation was there to please reach out if there's either general support or concerns about the direction the Board of Trustees is proposing to move forward. At some point, we really are, we could probably not make this decision in February, but we meet again in April, and by April, we would have to make a decision about moving forward with a full presidential search, potentially another interim, or again, the process we've kind of outlined going forward is what are the board's preferred processes. So truly, again, just wanted to engage you and give you the opportunity, let you know that's how we are unfolding and let you know the direction we were heading.
Okay, thank you. We're going to have some council members ask you some questions or give you some comments, okay?
Great.
Thank you. Counselor Hensley?
Well, I will just add that obviously, being part of Adam State and part of City Council, I do think, I'm really looking forward to the stability, obviously, having an interim. She's doing a fantastic job, obviously a very challenging position, and that idea that obviously removing that interim part allows that, it strengthens that position, and one of the things I look forward to is being both with Adam State and the city, is that it also strengthens that relationship that we have with Adam State, that we had created, the same thing similar to what Trinidad's going through, and so I think it's some exciting times going forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Agree, I couldn't agree more.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Gregel?
Cleve, thank you for taking time to come and informing us. The work that the trustees do for not only the city of Alamosa, but the whole valley is so important, and we will continue to support Adam State College, and we've missed meeting with you guys annually, and hopefully we can get back to that where we can visit with the new president and continue that communication and that support.
I can make sure that happens.
All right, thank you, sir.
So Cleve, I think what we used to do, and we kind of have forgotten to do that the last few years, is when you guys have some of your regular meetings, so not an extra-type thing, I think on an annual basis, we'd meet you for lunch or something like that, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel. Counselor Brawls, and then Counselor Carson.
Yeah, probably I'll echo what Counselor Gregel said, but thank you for taking the time to come and inform the City Council, because the relationship between the city and Adam State is all important, so thank you for taking that time.
No, I mean, it was an automatic, it was just a matter of trying to find the right time to do it, but look, I was born here and grew up here, and I absolutely understand the importance of the relationship between the city and the university, and again, look forward to every opportunity to enhance and grow that and make sure we're both successful in our endeavors.
I just wanted to say thank you, Cleve, for coming and presenting to us and let us know what we can do to help.
And again, I just reiterate, make sure there's, it's always, oh, this was a formal extension of, you know, feedback and input. I mean, I see most of you regularly somewhere in the community. Please feel free to reach out and engage at any time.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Simpson, thank you so much. I just wanted to say I really appreciate this extension, and I really appreciate Dr. Lovell. I've had the chance to meet with her personally, and my husband works at Adam State, and I feel like it's been a really positive, there have been many positive things. I'm looking forward to having the stability, as Counselor Hensley said, to really continue to build the partnerships that we've had and really continue to strengthen them. I think the meetings that Counselor Gregel was talking about and just all of the ways we can do to come together formally and informally, I think could be really, really helpful to make sure that we are all, you know, on the same page and understand, so I really appreciate this a lot. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mr. Simpson. ASU is the cornerstone of our community and the San Luis Valley, and it's always good to hear when you're able to make positive strides in the right direction, so congratulations. And I attended a meeting earlier last week that had a mixture of faculty and student body, and to hear their positive comments about Dr. Lovell was very encouraging. Seems like the students like that she participates a lot in some of their activities, so that's good to see and to hear.
I do think she absolutely has a genuine passion for Adam State, the San Luis Valley and the region, northern New Mexico and southern Colorado. She seems to be the right person at the right time. Adam State's really in a pretty good position right now. We still certainly have challenges. Enrollment continues to be a bit of a challenge, and financial position is a challenge, but there's a stability and a little light at the end of the tunnel that seems like we're really poised. I challenged Dr. Lovell. She's in a really unique position, because this university and this community are really poised to thrive, to excel. You'll hear more, but Adam State's, you know, in the process of getting ready to celebrate our 100-year recognition. There'll be a lot more information available about that and our focus going forward, so again, it's just a wonderful, it's a wonderful time to serve on the trustees at Adam State University.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And on a side note, staff and I worked up a letter that we're sending out to you. You'll probably get it in the mail in a couple of days in regards to the public access easement. Just want to give you a heads up that you'll probably be receiving that pretty soon, okay?
Look forward to that.
All right, thank you so very much.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next, we have business brought forward by city staff, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, we had an inspection at the fleet maintenance shop on the 4th of January. Our service lifts, one of the main service lifts and the, the main service lift in the fleet maintenance shop was found to be in unsatisfactory condition. The cables that lift the device and the safety locks are failing, and the repair cost of that lift would be in excess of $8,000. That lift is 30 years old, and buying a new lift would be $9,825, and that is our recommendation at this time. This is a non-budgeted item, so we would seek your approval in making that expenditure.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, counsel? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark, for sharing this with us. Is the hoist usually last 30 years? Is that the lifespan, or did we push this one past its...
It's at the end of its service life.
Okay, so they're normally 30, so this investment would be a 30-year?
Correct.
Okay, and then in the fiscal impact piece, I know we kind of talked about your snow, which comes in, or your snow budget, which is a whole different section in your budget, I'm sure, but it does say that it'll either need to cover it with savings or funds will need to come from the fund balance. Do you have visions of savings this year, or are you thinking that might not happen?
If I can answer this one.
Yes, sorry.
So we already talked about, we know we're going to be over budget on the snow, and then conversely, the potholes that that creates. But we're so early into the year, it's hard to know if maybe we get a grant and that offsets one, a different project, and there are savings there. I don't want turnover, but sometimes you see savings through that, and so we're always trying to make sure we're looking for savings, but there is a good chance this is going to have to come from the fund balance.
No problem. I just wanted, since it was in there, I just wanted to see if we had seen something that maybe not. So thank you. I think this is important, I'm not questioning the purchase, I just.
Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Gregel?
You know, in my opinion, this is kind of one of those no-brainer things. We don't want anybody getting smashed, so barring Counselor Gregel's comment, I was going to make a motion to go ahead and approve the request, the expenditure, but I'll give him a chance to speak.
No, I was just going to second it.
Okay, well, then I, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $9,825 for a four-post vehicle lift.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Thank you all so very much.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next, under Parks and Recreation, we have Andy to talk about a motion to name a potential new trail in the city.
I think we skipped the police.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, police, I'm sorry.
We can do parks, but...
Sorry about that, my bad.
Let the chief go up here.
See, I tell you, I still can't see with or without these glasses, it's a shame.
It's all right. How are you, Mayor? Good to see you, counsel.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all. I'm here to talk about the MDTs, which are mobile data terminals. The city's been putting money aside for replacement projects for approximately five years now. Police Department received our very first mobile data terminals, MDT, which was purchased with a federal grant in either 2008 or 2010. I'm not sure of which exact date it was, but it's around there. The life expectancy for these MDTs is approximately five to eight years. To continue our replacement project, I am requesting council approver transfer of funds in the amount of $28,272 from the city reserve fund to the IT hardware fund. This is a six-year replacement plan in which we will be hopefully replacing all dated MDTs during the six years. The MDTs have improved our time management and communication while officers are in the field. These also provide officers the ability to complete reports in the field, which minimizes the required time in the office. Any questions? Yes?
Yeah, I just had one question. Did any of these units, were any of these units part of the ones that failed now in this last high-speed chase? Were they...
No, so that's actually...
Two different pieces of equipment, right?
It is, it is. That was the radios in the vehicles. These are our computers in the vehicles, which we rely on communication from dispatch, and I mean, it drastically saves us a lot of time getting the information in the car for the officer in the field, instead of having to drive back and forth, and then we've got more time to actually be proactive on the streets.
And so, well, I was able to, through some of your monthly meetings, talk a little bit about this from a budget amendment perspective, but to make sure everyone has the same information. We have been putting money aside, and it goes into the capital reserve, and Judy's done a great job of tracking how much we have there for radios, MDTs, vehicles, those types of things, and VRs as well. So many acrimony, but anyways, so we actually have more in that reserve than what this request is for, and so it's not going to come from the general fund or anything like that, but from a staff perspective, we've also talked that when we pull the CIP together, when we know, even though it's coming from a dedicated fund, we need to be including that in the CIP, so it doesn't look like this is an unplanned budget amendment type of situation as well. But there is, there's more dedicated funds for this in that reserve fund than what we're requesting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carson?
I mean, with that being said, I make a motion to authorize the purchase of six new MDTs to replace the outdated equipment, not to exceed $28,300.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holling?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Chief, very much. And now for sure, this time, it's Parks and Rec.
You got it, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, counsel, there's a motion here before you to name a potential new trail after Toivo Malm. I have practiced that pronunciation, so you know. A little bit of background, but most of it's in your communication. This exciting project would connect our southern neighborhoods to the Rio Grande Corridor and to the Alamosa National Wildlife Refuge. About a mile of trail on existing city property, and we've been working with Public Works, and I want to thank Mark back there and SLV Go, our trail development partners, on this project. So the exact location of the trail, the exact tread of it, isn't defined. Yes, that's the area we're going to be, but we've reached the point where if staff's going to continue to work on this, we wanted to secure Dr. Malm's generous donation of $50,000, which would cover the costs of this trail. So that's why we're here before you tonight. Are you okay with naming that trail after Dr. Malm's father? And this is permitted under your city policies. That's about all I have. You probably have questions on this one, so I'll open it up for questions.
I do want to add a little bit. For me, this is an exciting addition. Not only is it, as you know, we're always looking to leverage outside funding to try to bring improvements to our community, and so we're very grateful for this beneficiary to look at Alamosa and want to benefit, and, but when you look at a map of our community, a lot of our trails are on the northern part of our community. That's where the levees been, the ranch property, the golf course, all of that, and so it's, that's kind of where some of the natural trails have shown up. This is the beginning to create access for our southern Alamosa into our trail system, and so it does create this trail in the short term, but then the long term is to connect into the larger trail system that we hope to have, which is to go from the ranch to the wildlife refuge. And so for me, when we look at our community, the same way when we looked at Montana Azul Park, even though they were saying you've got more parks than you need, if you looked at our community, there's a deficit of parks for our children in that southwest quadrant. there's there is a deficit of parks for our children in that southwest quadrant. When you look at the trails in our community, when you look at South Alamosa, you can you can kind of say the same thing. So for me personally, not only is it always great to have someone take an interest in our community and donate, but it's helping to create access for neighborhoods that currently don't have that same access. So I just wanted to bring that up as well.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, Counselor, comment times? Or Counselor Hensley?
I'll just go ahead. I think this is sounds awesome. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to agree to the name of the new trail to Toivo Malm Trail.
Yeah, good.
We got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I just would like to thank the Malm Malm's family and Dr. Malm as well. I'm trying to make sure I pronounce it right because that is a generous donation that she gave on behalf of her father. I did read the information and I looked at the picture that you attached to the document, and it seems like he was an outdoorsman and enjoyed being outside, and this is her way of memory, making a memory of her her father. So thank you. Okay? All right, start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, up next, we have Fire.
I think we got tired of those meetings where only the city attorney was talking. So we're having almost every department head tonight do a presentation.
You're trying to get back up to that four-hour meeting time. Okay, Chief. You're up.
Yeah, I'm good. Evening, Mayor, counsel. Before you tonight is the initial stuff for the hazmat updated mutual aid agreement. Back in the early nineties, when the team was formed, there were agreements for made with the communities within the valley. It was discovered that a lot of that stuff hadn't been updated since that point in time. So this is an updated MOU or mutual aid agreement with the hazmat board. Basically, what they do is if we have anything that's beyond our capabilities, it gives us the ability to call them, they'll come in and assist or take over hazardous materials cleanup and relieve us of those responsibilities. Equipment-wise, everything, they are far better equipped than we are, so it's it's really a pretty good deal for all of us in the valley. We do pay dues to the hazardous materials board, eleven hundred and seventy dollars a year, which is very reasonable. Just an example of that, a couple months ago, a community south of us had an incident and they were only out for about four hours. But if they wouldn't have been paying into this fund with their dues, the bill on that would have been well over three thousand dollars. So hazardous materials cleanup and response costs a lot of money, so it's really a bargain for the city. So we're just trying to get all the agreements updated, so.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Counselor Brawls?
Excuse me, I was just going to make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance number three. I have to read the whole Senate Republican hearing. And ordinance approving intergovernmental agreement amongst the San Luis Valley Hazardous Standard Board, Inc. and various governmental entities in the San Luis Valley for the provision of mutual aid in providing hazardous material response and set it for a public hearing. Is that February twentieth?
I will second.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, Chief, that says E provision for adoption of a hazardous hazardous materials response plan. I'm assuming we already have one. We just need to.
Correct.
Update it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Okay, start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chief. Okay, up next, we have City Manager and Legal.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the first item before you tonight is the twenty nineteen committee assignments. As you probably remember, we've routinely had what we call a mini-retreat, usually either in January or February. We've decided since we don't have any new council members and we really didn't have some needy stuff to warrant bringing you guys in on a Saturday for a mini-retreat, we would we would skip that this year. But one of the items we would usually accomplish during that retreat is the annual gut check of do you want to serve on the same committees that you've been serving on? Do the times still work? Is it an opportunity for someone else to serve or or those types of things? So tonight, what we'd like to do is maybe just walk through what the current assignments are. You'll see some of this. We need to update the information as well because we know Dustin's no longer here with the with the airport. So we just wanted to walk through this and see if we're keeping the the main council assignment with the alternate or if we need to be making changes. Do you want me to walk us through that then?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the first one up is the Airport Advisory Board. We have Counselor Carson as the main appointee and Christina Daniel as the alternate. Does that still work? Okay. Tree Board, we have Counselor Daniel as the appointee.
I love the Tree Board, except they changed their meeting dates. And so I will need to not be on the Tree Board anymore. But it is a really awesome board, so people should be excited for it. It's now going to meet the second, I believe it's the second Tuesday, right, Andy? Second Wednesday, I apologize, thank you, of the month. And so I can't make those second weeks, guys, I'm sorry.
Is it at twelve?
Still at noon, still at noon.
Does it end, is it a hour meeting or does it go for a while?
It's usually about four to five, fifteen. It's never full.
So I think under those circumst- as long as, because I usually have a one o'clock class, so but I could do it if nobody else wanted.
And they do provide food, right? Do we do? If that helps.
Did you want to do it?
Okay, so Counselor Hensley, you're willing to serve as the appointee?
Sure.
And then did we want an alternate or just to leave it as the one appointee?
So a second Wednesday of the month. And where's the meeting at?
At the City Hall.
Okay, it says there. I apologize. Okay. So we need to update this. This is from last year. Okay, the Fire Pension Board, this is by state statute, so we're gonna we're gonna go pass this one. It's the mayor and the finance director. So the next one we have is the Golf Board, which is Counselor Hensley with Counselor Grego as the alternate. I'm seeing head nods as if you're staying. Okay. Inner Governmental Affairs Legislative, we had the mayor per policy and then the mayor pro temp as the alternate per the policy. So and then we have Counselor Hensley listed for some reason. I think that's when we weren't sure who the mayor pro temp maybe was going to be. So we're good with the mayor and mayor pro temp with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Recreation Advisory Board, it's mayor by charter, city manager by charter. The council appointee was Counselor Grego with Counselor Carson as alternate. It's the second Tuesday, bi-monthly at eleven-thirty at the rec center. Does that still work? We are doing way better than I thought we would. SLV DRG, our current appointee is Mayor Coleman with the alternate as Counselor Hensley.
Still good.
Okay. Senior Citizens, our main appointee is Counselor Broyles with Counselor Grego as the alternate. This continues to work? Okay. The Alamosa Capital Leasing Corporation is with the bylaws and again, I think we have Counselor Hensley listed because we weren't sure if you were mayor pro temp yet or not. So I'm going to go pass that one. Library Board, we have Counselor Daniel with Counselor Carson as the alternate. That still works? Okay. Marketing Board, we have Counselor Broyles with Counselor Grego.
Actually, what we've done, we sort of switched that during the year because we got approval with the idea that since I'm already on the marketing board, that I was representing the city as well.
Okay, okay.
We've been kind of doing that for a while now.
So then, so should we have you as the lead and then still list Counselor Grego as an alternate?
I'm good.
Or David as an alternate or Counselor Broyles?
Not a big deal.
Okay. So Counselor Hensley as the lead and then Counselor Broyles as the alternate. Okay, unfortunately, Counselor V Hill's not here. We've got the School Board. Would you like me to skip this one?
No, we're still good.
We're still good, okay.
Jan and I, we work that out whenever. He he doesn't miss miss many, but when he needs an alternate, he lets me know ahead of time.
Okay.
That's fine.
Council of of Governments, we have Counselor Carson as the lead and Counselor Hensley as the alternate. Okay. Water Roundtable, we have Counselor Carson as the lead and Counselor Grego as the alternate. Alamosa Housing Authority, we have Counselor Daniel as the lead and Counselor Hensley as the alternate.
So I'm going to be honest, so for me, I would probably never be able to, for this semester. The hard part is I I'm a semester to semester. And so for this semester, for example, I do teach Monday, Wednesday, Friday at eleven. So I would never probably really be able to be the alternate.
I I'm okay to stay on as the primary. Most most months work for me, I've only missed, I think, a couple, so I think it's okay.
Is there another one willing to be an alternate? Okay, Counselor Broyles as the alternate. ASU Student Government, we have Counselor Hensley and then Counselor V Hill as the alternate. Okay. Historic Preservation, we have Counselor V Hill. Okay. Economic Development Committee, we've had Mayor Coleman, Counselor Hensley, myself and other staff as appointed.
I'm still good with it.
Community Corrections, we have the mayor per their bylaws and it's the police chief per their bylaws.
That still works.
And then ASU VIP, we've had the city manager, who is going to be more the public relations project specialist, and then Counselor Hensley. Does that still work? I don't think you're getting out of it right away with the branding thing. Okay, then Investment Committee, we have the finance director, Counselor Broyles, and Counselor V Hill. That still works? It's an as needed, so it hasn't been a big burden. I think this one has already changed. For the Rio Grande Farm Park, it's couns- we have listed here Counselor V Hill, but didn't he bring up that he needed somebody else to probably take that on?
I I thought that he had the library board and the farm park were at the same time, and so that's when I took the library board?
Well, but I think more recently, he's talked that he wanted us to be prepared that he was not going to be serving on the the farm park.
I could I could do that one if no one else is interested.
And we will need to look up when those meetings are for you?
Yeah, if it's so if it's the second week, then it's I can't. But if it's not the second week of the month, then I can.
Okay. And is there anyone that would like to be an alternate? So Counselor Carson could be an alternate. We'll check the timing to make sure it's not a second week. The Art Jury, we've had Counselor Grego and Counselor Hensley as an alternate.
Can I ask a question on that? So is the Art Jury, so I know I like, there's a meeting coming up in two, like, I think in two weeks on a Monday. Is that the Art Jury? Is that?
That's just the Art Committee.
Okay, and that's not one of these official? I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Really, the Art Jury's just a one-time, you get to vote on the art pieces?
I just wanted to be sure.
So I'm not sure why we have an alternate on that, to be honest, but.
We're good.
We're good. The Animal Shelter, which is coordinated by the county, we've had Counselor Grego and Counselor Carson and myself. I'm not aware of any recent meetings. And then the Lead Policy Committee was Counselor Daniel with Counselor Carson as an alternate. That still works? So that's it. That would be the end of that item.
Great job, everybody. You all are so busy on all these different committees. That's amazing. Great job.
There's only one other committee. I actually, I thought it was listed on this, but it's not. And so I wanted to maybe bring it up for a discussion. In the past, CML has their Policy Committee and beginning with our previous mayor, we've had the mayor be the person appointed to it, but it doesn't have to be the mayor. So Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted to continue in that capacity or if you wanted to see if anyone else wanted to serve in it.
I would like to see if anyone else would like to participate because at work, I can't, I'm missing a lot of meetings as it is. And this is one that caused me to have to use vacation time and to travel. And it's it can be challenging sometimes for me with the workload that I have. So if anybody's interested to represent us, I would appreciate that.
And so just to offer a little bit more information, it it is something where they normally travel to Denver. I think the clerk shared that the previous mayor maybe went four times. It's usually more when they're in session. So that's usually the timeframe. And they do try to keep it just for like a one day.
And what I could do, if you're, I believe usually the policy is the day before or right around the CML meeting, isn't it?
Um, this one coming up is the day after the CML work.
Okay, so what where I was going with this is I don't want to, I I'm up there often for those. There's time, so if you want to do it, but let's say you were going to miss it, if you let me know, I might be able to then stay the extra day. So we could maybe work that out since I'm already up there anyway. So if you'll just always let me know. So we'll just assume that you'll do it, but you'll let me know if you can't. And then then I can plan it to stay the extra. Because I do think it's good to have somebody from Alamosa on the policy.
And then the city does cover travel and you would just coordinate with the city clerk for those.
And I will be going to one of those meetings next Friday, and I'll bring that information back that I received from going up there, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Heather, for bringing that up too. I appreciate that. Do we need a motion to approve the committee assignments?
I don't think so. I think we've always just talked through it and that's been it.
Okay. Record-breaking time this time. I mean, this is awesome. You guys are rocking it today. Way to go. Okay, up next, Item B.
We'll see how this next item goes.
Okay.
So as council remembers, we had a work session where we talked about the the potential of bringing before the residents the idea of a half-cent dedicated street tax that would go into a trust fund. As we take a look at that issue, we wanted to make sure that we're as transparent and that we can be as reassuring as possible to the citizens of them knowing what that money would go towards. And so as part of that, we didn't want to put before citizens just a simple request to approve a half-cent to go to streets. We actually talked about wanting to make sure they knew what streets would be repaired. So they would specifically know those streets instead of just streets in general. And to have a little bit more of a grassroots and to complement the information you may get from staff, which is usually more technical and focused on those types of things, we talked about the idea of creating this citizen advisory group. And so the idea is to have two from each ward, to have two residents at large, and then to have two residents that represent either the chamber, ACID, a business, an employer, that type of thing. We created a special application for that and we set the deadline for February twenty-second. So we we went ahead and publicized that and sent that out. We are starting to get some applications coming in. This is though the formal resolution that creates that committee. And so you can't appoint anyone if we don't have that formal resolution with the committee. So what's before you is that resolution that formally sets it up with the same type of structure we have for some of our other boards. And again, this is to to take a look at all the different streets in the city. Yes, city staff will be working with them, but we will not be forcing our opinion onto the citizen group. We will just be providing information on what the streets are. We'll probably drive them around, look at the different streets, those types of things, and really take at least two months for them to dig into this and and offer things. We also wanted to be clear of our language that they would be making a recommendation to council. And so council can take a look at that list and and maybe there's one project they're not sure needs to be towards the top. You can modify it. Nothing that this group is doing is locking you into anything. And again, staff may take a look at that and say, you know, we'd we'd recommend X, Y, and Z. And you can take all of that into your consideration as council members and and anything you're hearing out on the streets as well. So I wanted to make sure we're we're clear with that. Yeah, I guess that was a play on words. I want to make sure we're we're clear with that because and this group also is not expected to help us sell the tax. Um, they may not agree for tax, but if there is gonna be one, they wanna have a say in what the streets are. So, um, it's, it's not something that we wanna, um, do a bait and switch or anything like that for these individuals.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Carson and then Counselor Hensley.
Um, I move that we adopt Resolution Number Three Dash Twenty-Nineteen, creating the Citizen Street Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Item C.
Finally, the city attorney gets to speak.
Yes.
Uh, you may recall that briefly, oh, last fall, Adam State had approached the city with respect to, uh, asking whether our building inspector could inspect a modular that they wanted to install on their property for Gingerbread House or to allow Gingerbread House to install. And we discovered at that point that they were not allowed to put manufactured homes, uh, on that property, and so you modified the development code to allow for manufactured homes in campus zones. Now that that's out of the way, we're back to them wanting to be able to use the city's building inspection expertise to improve that, since they don't have that on site, normally they would not be subject to our building code because they are a state governmental agency. And that's why it would, it requires an intergovernmental agreement for us to go ahead and perform those building inspection services that they would normally do for themselves. So that's, that's what this ordinance is for, it's to approve an intergovernmental agreement to allow that to happen. We would treat them just the same as we would any other, um, building applicant within the city of Alamosa.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Grego.
I had another question, uh, here about a year or so back, uh, we were approached about potholes in that area and whether the city would, uh, fix those potholes and they, is that, is that the college property or state property where we can't go in there and fix potholes?
Well, if there are potholes in the streets, we fix them, if there are potholes in a parking lot, we're not gonna fix them.
Well, in front of, uh, this, uh, this, uh...
Counselor Grego, we'd, I don't, I'd have to, we'd have to look at the map to see if it's a public street or if it's a public drive. Um, and it's not immediately coming back to me, so I'm not recalling that, but we can take a look, 'cause I'm not sure if it's a public street or a private drive, but that may have been, for whatever you're remembering, that might have been what it hinged on.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Um, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So Eric, with this, if we send our inspector out and they're not required to have us inspect it and they don't wanna fix what we've inspected and said needs to be fixed, are there requirements for them to fix it?
This isn't a, uh, inspection of an existing, uh, facility, this is like a, a building permit process. So they're, they're putting a new building in and we would be requiring them to meet the twenty-fifteen, uh, code to get that put in.
Okay, so it's not like an ongoing inspection for things that they need?
No, no, it's, it's inspect, certify, or issue the certificate of occupancy, once it does meet the code. So they don't have a building yet, and this is how they will get it.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we pass on first reading, Ordinance Number Four, and set it for a public hearing on February the twentieth at seven o'clock or sooner after.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We have, uh, Item D.
Thank you, Mayor. You will recall that, uh, in December of last year, you had considered various options for funding a, uh, replacement of the failing infrastructure on the front nine of the golf course. And at that meeting on December nineteen, you had approved pursuit of, um, for lack of a better word, I'll, I'll call it a second lease purchase option, or lease purchase agreement, uh, using the golf course clubhouse facility as the lease purchase collateral, if you will, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to put toward the cost of the, uh, replacement and repair of the infrastructure on the front nine. That is not the entire amount of the estimated repairs needed. Um, there was a study that the city had commissioned, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's over eight hundred thousand dollars, but less than a million, for the, for the total cost for that replacement of the infrastructure. So this, this would cover only part of that cost, but the five hundred thousand dollars was the maximum amount available under, uh, the, the guide, lending guidelines of the bank, given what we had paid down on the earlier one, that's the amount of cap that we had freed up to be able to use to place this second lease purchase on it. Um, and the, the staff has worked with San Luis Valley Federal Bank to finalize the terms of that, and what this resolution does is approves those terms in a formal mechanism, and the resolution also adopts forms, anyway, of the lease purchase agreement that will be applicable to this, the site lease, the omnibus certificate, and the tax compliance certificate, all of which, uh, need to be signed by the mayor to document the transaction.
So to put it in my language, um, you guys have essentially, all the terms are the same, it's the same rate, it's the same amount, it's for the same project, it just needs to be through this more formal process for the resolution. To clarify on the, the amount, the, um, once we put the pump in, which we'd already paid for, it brought that project dollar amount down to about eight hundred thousand. So I don't want anybody to get a little worried about that one million, we've already brought it down to around eight hundred, we're hoping to see savings beyond that, um, but five hundred is the max that we could do, and I don't think council wanted to finance the whole amount anyways. So nothing's changed from your previous vote, it just needs to be this more formal action.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, counsel, Counselor Daniel?
Um, Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Four Dash Twenty-Nineteen for the site lease and lease purchase agreement for five hundred thousand.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? No? Oh, Counselor Hensley?
So I did go to the golf board, and they have new officers. Uh, so Eddie Valdez is the new president, and Kayle Mortensen is the new vice president. Um, so that's about all there. Um, I guess I'll also say with CML, um, we have, uh, we do have a new executive director, and it is Kevin Ballmer, and he will start April first. I think it's kind of ironic, he started on April Fool's Day. Um, there is gonna be some activities that we're putting together, uh, for Sam, um, because he's done such a phenomenal job, and so I'll have more information on that. And then, um, as you, I, as I think most of you know, is, um, come this next summer, I'll become the president of the CML Executive Board. So I'm really looking forward to working with Kevin, Kevin and I have been actually talking kind of on a weekly basis since this has happened. And we have set the dates for the retreat, um, the Executive Board Retreat, which will be in Alamosa, which, we're still putting together everything, but if you wanna put it on your calendar, it'll be July eleventh through the thirteenth. And, um, obviously there'll be situations where if you wanna join, I'd love to have everybody be there at the dinner on the eleventh, things like that. So we'll get more information, but wanted to let you know those dates, um, because this'll be definitely a time for us to show off our city to a lot of different, um, people from other communities. So, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, um, I don't have a committee report, but Counselor Grego just brought up something I wanted to make sure that we recognize. Uh, there's a boy scout in the back, if I'm not mistaken. We wanna thank you for coming to our meeting tonight, and, um, we appreciate you showing up. Thank you so very much. Okay, thank you, Counselor Grego. Okay. Up next, we have, uh, staff announcements.
So Mark, um, is making his way up, um, we do have an update on our Outfall Project for the wastewater treatment plant. And then following that, I do have a bit of a discussion item for council as well.
So we have completed the construction of the Outfall Project at the wastewater treatment plant. The total construction cost was four hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and that was completed on January twenty-eighth by Garger Construction. Um, we will not be, um, turning the water loose on that project right now. The river is frozen and the, the pipe is in the river, so we wanna wait until that thaws before we, uh, charge the pipe. Um, and there are two project closeout reports to close, to finish the project, so we're done with the construction phase, but not totally done with the project, and those two reports are one to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and another to the Army, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
And I just wanna thank Mark and, and his crews and the, and the people who've worked on this. This is a quick update, but this was actually a major project with a lot of moving pieces, and it's to make sure our wastewater treatment plant remains in compliance with the permits and the requirements and, and those types of things. And so, um, this is actually a really big deal to be able to get this project done and, and completed under budget. So, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, something I, I needed to discuss a little bit with council, and it was related to the Citizen Street Advisory Committee that we talked about, the vote's still good. Um, but we have not talked about if council will wanna do interviews. You, when you're doing advisory boards, you guys sometimes do do interviews. And so I wanted to check with you, when we look at the calendar, um, February twenty-second is the deadline. We could set interviews for Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, but that will put you doing two back-to-back meetings, 'cause we have that work session for you for the downtown and the water on that Tuesday. So we could do the Wednesday if you wanna do two nights in one week, or we could do it before your next meeting on March sixth. I think we were hoping to make appointments by March sixth, but we can make it at the next appointment. But if you're, don't feel like you need to do interviews, then we wouldn't need to worry about that schedule.
What are your thoughts, counsel? I'll let you all chime in.
I'd, I'd like to do interviews, I think this is a pretty important committee with lots of implications, and I'd like to be able to tell the voters how we, like, follow this process, I think that's super transparent. Um, I, and I would be willing to do two nights in a row. I know that's a bummer, I know that it makes it for a long week, um, but then we can get this group started before the beginning of March if we did our work session on Tuesday and then these interviews on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson?
I agree, uh, with Counselor Daniel, um, I do have one personal issue on tho, during those meetings I may have to call in, might be, um, I will be having, uh, surgery that week, so...
As long as you're comfortable with that, uh, and, and council's comfortable with that, I, I don't have.
Yeah, we'll be comfortable with that.
So what I'm hearing is two thoughts of doing it Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, knowing that then that's kind of two meetings for council. Is there anyone that, that is opposed to that?
Counselor Hensley?
I'm not opposed, but can I just confirm something? So we're moving, um, we had moved the things to Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and I had two things down, it was the downtown plan and the water.
Yes.
Presentation, and they're both switched over to Tuesday now, or just one of them?
Both.
And so that, so we'd have both of those on Tuesday, and then Wednesday we would do the interviews.
Correct.
I just wanted to be sure.
There's a lot of moving pieces.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then, uh, you know, we can plan on starting at six for the interviews, um, unless, I, I, it might be nice not to have to rush through them, we could get through all of them and not have a meeting to have to go to, so... But I just wanna make sure you guys knew that we already had you booked the night before.
Okay. I'm good with it too, those two days.
Six P.M. on the twenty-seventh, yes. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move forward with that in mind, and that's all we had from the staff update.
Okay, good deal, thank you. Um, up next, we have council comments. Any council comments? Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Brawls, and then Counselor Daniel. We, we ended up tying two to two, 'cause, um, we couldn't, uh, use family members or anything. But, but, but I, I, I was gonna save this for the last, but since Counselor Carson brought this up, we gotta give him a round of applause. This guy came in to save our team from losing, this council from losing, with a broken arm almost, and still jumped into that cold freezing water, way to go, Counselor Carson, twice. Way to take one for the team.
I, I was sick, Counselor Carson, so thank you so much for taking care of the team for us and being there, I appreciate it a lot.
Oh, my goodness, wow, wow. Yeah, he, he took one for the team, trooper right there, I tell you. Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Brawls and Counselor Daniel?
No, I, I just wanted to comment on the golf board budget. Initially, I thought that they were gonna show a forty thousand dollar loss, they showed a six thousand dollar loss. But I would, I would like to at least encourage them to show a break even in their budget. They oughta be able to find six thousand dollars, so it comes out zero. I just hate seeing negative budgets.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I've been thinking about the trail, uh, name that we just decided to do. I would love if council can sign a card to that family, um, thanking them for their donation, but also, you know, honoring her father and just really, um, I think that's really special. Um, and then Crossroads has been a part of our community for a really long time, and their, um, executive director retired. His, he actually, his retirement date was, uh, February first, I found this out at the Crossword, Crossroads Board Meeting yesterday. Um, so Leroy Martinez, who's had a long history in our community, um, has retired, and so I'm sure he's got lots of things planned. Uh, but Charlie. Oh, I can't remember his last name. His second-in-command is now the executive director, I apologize that I can't remember his last name. Um, but Crossroads is still going strong, but I just thought he, they, they've been such a big impact on the substance use treatment that we have here, I thought council should know. Um, and then I just really wanted to thank the city team for all of the ICE Fest activities, I thought they did a fantastic job, um, and I very much enjoyed, um, the weekend, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley?
I was actually gonna also thank for the ICE Fest, so just didowing what, um, Counselor Daniel said. It was a fantastic weekend, and it has become, I think, a true staple of what we do in Alamosa. Um, and it is something that we look forward to now every January, so thanks for everything, and thanks for your crew for all the hard work.
Counselor Carson?
Um, yeah, I also wanted to say thank you to you guys, it was really, uh, really neat event. I was really impressed with everything you guys did, I had never been to the run, I thought it was really great. So thank you. I did have one more comment, and I meant to bring this up a couple of weeks ago, was, uh, I know all you guys heard that, uh, Huberto's shop burned in San Luis, I was gonna say, as a council, I think, or as a city, we should probably send him a card or something, I don't know if we have or not, but I felt, uh, we should probably do something, he's done a lot for the artscape.
We haven't sent a card, but I have talked to him, um, and, yeah, and, and that kind of stuff. So, but yeah, we can look at doing a card as well and having council sign that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I too would like to thank the entire staff, um, parks and rec, first responders, and, and everyone who participated in the ICE Fest festivities. Wonderful job, a lot of people from different parts of the San Luis Valley and different parts of Colorado are coming down, uh, for that event every year now, and it was really pleasing to see so many people. I also, I wanted to thank, uh, Counselor Carson, 'cause I have it in my notes right here, for jumping into that freezing cold water with the, the, um, hurt arm. But I also would like to come in and thank staff for jumping in, Holly and also Chief, they came out there. Chief just walked out of side of his vehicle, walked in, down there, and he just jumped in, got back up, and went back up like that. I mean, it was, he just, he just did his thing and went back, but that was, that was great. And, um, I gotta also, Eric, Eric was going to jump, I was there because we were riding the fat bikes, and, but he made it to the finalist, uh, round, so the times conflicted, so he wasn't able to do the polar plunge. Uh, but he, he, he was willing. I think, yeah. And I think, Eric, did you win the race on the fat bike? Third, okay, third place, so that's good, that's good. Um, also I'd like to thank, um...
You're not gonna stop there, though, I mean, I thought we talked, you were gonna point out that you ran the five K, did the fat bike, and still did do the polar plunge compared to some people's excuses for not showing up.
I, I think there was one staff member, I'm not gonna say his name, but A.R., something like that. He was complaining that he did the five K or something like that, so he, he didn't have energy left over to do the fat bike or the jumping into the ice, the... or the jumping into the ice, the, okay, mm-hmm.
Okay, you can move on now.
Okay, I can move on, good, good, okay.
I will say this, though, I was misled, you told me the tent was heated.
Oh, you, you know what, the year before last, it was heated, so we need to make sure we put that in the budget next year. Alright. I did tell Counselor Carson that. Okay, um, also I'd like to thank, um, Counselor Daniel for, uh, running in the five K, I believe, she did a good job, her and Kevin. Uh, Counselor Hensley, uh, participated, uh, being, uh, helping out with the Kiwanis Group and the Pirates costume contest, and, uh, being at other events. Counselor Daniel also helped out with the faux snowman judging contest. So whenever council was able to support, like we did, show up in numbers like that, that means a lot to the community, it shows that we care. And staff, it's obvious that you care because you spent time away from your family to make sure that that event was a success, uh, that weekend. So thank you all so very much, and, and I'm, I'm not gonna talk any smack to our city manager today, um, because, um, I'm just not going to, but we'll just leave on that positive note that, uh, we all had a wonderful weekend, thank you so very much. Thank you, meetings adjourned, everybody.